Gage?
Here.
Harris?
Isum?
Here.
Kifer?
Here.
Seivertson?
Here.
Zingy?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
(inaudible)
Everybody, gentlely, I won't be so quick, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna shoot and hit the wall.
That first brings us down to a public hearing on ordinance 151802 amending the Chapter 1112 Telecommunications Services and Rates. Is anybody here to speak to that? Seeing none, that brings us down to Communications. Today we have a proclamation for Red Ribbon Week. I'd like to read it. If there's somebody here to accept it, say three words, that'd be great. Whereas in 1985, the Red Ribbon Campaign began as a means to address the importance of healthy, drug-free youth. Whereas Red Ribbon was chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Nareke Kiki Camerina, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty. As by 1988, Red Ribbon Campaign was adopted by Congress. And whereas in 1988, the Red Ribbon Campaign has been sponsored by the National Family Partnership, but works year-round to raise awareness of the social destruction caused by drugs in America. Whereas cities across America continue to be plagued with the numerous problems associated with alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use. Whereas local leaders in government and in the community are crucial to the support needed to reduce the use of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. Whereas Red Ribbon Week is an opportunity to encourage people to seek the help they need and to recognize the work of those providing education on drug use, as well as those protecting youth from drug use. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Lou Williams III, Mayor of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska, do hereby proclaim October 23rd to 31st, 2015, as Red Ribbon Week. And with the theme of "Respect Yourself, Be Drug-Free," City of Ketchikan. Is there anybody here to... All right, Terrence.
My name's Terrence Robbins, I'm with the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition. And I would just like to thank you for this. And say that Ketchikan's very lucky to have a city council that cares so much about the people in this town, both youth and adult. And I've really enjoyed personally working with you through the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition in the past. And anyone who would like to pick up a red ribbon, right now they're down at Togga Substance Green, and you can pick them up all week at any time during the business hours. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Terrence. All right, that brings us down to persons to be heard. I have Robert Boyle on the list. Come on, Robert.
Your Honor, Members of the Council, Robert Boyle, Superintendent of the Ketchikan Gateway Borough School District. I have two items I'd like to discuss with the council tonight. One, I'm reading from a recent news article. Remnants of Pacific Hurricane Ohho battered Alaska's southeast coast on Friday. It goes on to say that we had record-setting rain here in Ketchikan, 80 mile an hour wind. I don't know what your experience was, but mine was, the power stayed on and all services were full go. And I am thoroughly impressed with the city's efforts to maintain all those services through what was considered record-setting rains and exceptional weather. My compliments to all of you in the council and members of your utilities. The second item that I had that I'd like to discuss is something that makes me extraordinarily proud to be a citizen in Ketchikan. And it has to do with the police department's relationship with the school district. If you did not pick up on the news, on October 13, a man was disarmed by a school resource officer outside of West High School in Anchorage. The man's parent of two students in the school. The police say that the man threatened the school resource officers with a gun outside of West High School, and now faces charges of assault and weapons misconduct. And so I just wanted to say that there's one thing that we do in this community that I think is truly a great profile on the quality of community we have, and has to be able to have the police department provide a school resource officer in our schools. It's unknown to many how engaged that officer is with issues that would not quite profile this, but the number of students that we have in our community that have real adult-like situations that they have to deal with. For them to have access to the officer at school has, I believe, averted many, many serious situations for those children, and makes our community a more positive place. And the officers that the police department consistently place in our school have been exceptional individuals, and I appreciate that. So, two things. Congratulations on keeping the lights on during the record-setting storm, and also for providing a quality atmosphere for our children while they are students in the school district. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. All right, Bob was the only one on the list. Is there any else, anybody else here to speak to the council tonight? Seeing none, let's move on. That brings us to consent agenda. The only thing on the agenda that I wanted to also add to the consent, that was, is the award of contract Ford Cal Worthington Ford Lincoln on that truck for KPU, I believe. If anybody has any objection to that, or doesn't, we'll put that on consent. Otherwise, that's all I had. Hearing none, we'll put that on consent. Do we have a motion to consent?
Prove consent.
We have a second?
Second.
Moving second. Madam Clerk, please agree to items.
Approval of minutes, special meeting of September 24th, 2015, and regular meeting of October 1st, 2015. Exempting the procurement of IBM iSeries platform maintenance agreement from competitive bidding requirements, Education Management Associates. Exempting the procurement of Portwest 34.5 KV breaker replacement and repairs from the competitive bidding requirements from BCS Switchgear. And the award of contract number 1505 Ford F450XL with Cal Worthington Ford Lincoln.
Thank you. Any questions, any council members?
Your Honor.
Yes, Bob.
Yeah, this one for Andy in regards to the breaker replacement at the Plaza. Is Andy in the room?
I'm looking for him. Come on up, Andy. He's here. Give him a minute.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, well, my concerns were when we used words like obsolete. And first of all, I'd like to thank the crew for getting that thing back in service and getting them breakers ordered as they did. But my question for Andy is, how do we look at these pieces of equipment in regards to replacement and updating? Are we looking at anything in this particular... I know that's not the first time we've had problems down there. We blew up, I think, an underground line once, and now we have breaker issues down there.
Thank you, Councilmember Seivertson, Andy Donato, KPU Electric Division Manager. Councilmember Seivertson, what we're doing in this case, in this particular request, we're going to take the old breaker, get it repaired, and then that'll become our spare. So prior to this, we had no spares for this particular application. And so now we'll have a spare for that. So, in the term obsolete, you know, this was stuff produced in the early 80s. It's no longer produced of that type. So, the only parts and pieces we can get are those that are surplus in the various different switchgear demolition yards throughout the country. So you have to pick through those pieces and find the parts. I hope that answered your question.
Well, yeah, I understood why we're doing it with the replacement breaker at this particular point. But I was just wondering if, looking forward, if, how do we plan for replacing these obsolete breakers? Or is there, is really a need to do that, looking forward?
Well, there's a serious need. In fact, we have some other switchgear that we're looking at. Well, we're actually gonna try to see if we can't defer another year. There's another array that's out of the 1940s, and that's at Beaver Falls. And you know, whenever you get 30 years out of a piece of equipment, you've gotten your life out of it. Anything more, that's just really great. So this stuff out of the 40s, holy smokes. Fortunately, right now, we have some spare parts and pieces. We think if we have a failure, we can get it together in short time. But eventually, we'll have to replace that array also. But that will be a large project.
Thank you, Andy.
And that's how we do these. So as we come across them, and as we can schedule them in our budget, little by little, we're making those retrofits, refits, et cetera. Anything else?
Yeah, I got a question, Andy, then. There's $13,800 there for repair and refurbishing the one that failed.
Correct.
You're saying the one that failed is old and past its usefulness?
It has, so the parts and pieces that we're replacing, I think there may be a breakdown where the cost is. So these are vacuum breakers, and similar to the size of a cup of coffee there that Councilmember Zingy has, something like the size of a Coke can or soup can, is this vacuum bottle. And inside of this is a set of contacts, and the contacts are manipulated by a magnet. And it's vacuumed so that when it opens up, it extinguishes the arc. There's no arc. Well, when the vacuum eventually fails because the bottle leaks, well, then the breaker gets, a piece of the breaker gets destroyed. And so that's what happened in this particular case. So they're going to replace the vacuum bottles. And that'll give new life in this thing for quite a period. The same thing happened, by the way, to the breaker at Swan Lake, if you recall, just a couple of months ago. So that breaker came back repaired, and they put that in. So that's what we plan to do here, and then we'll have a spare breaker. So this gear is still maintainable, so we won't have to replace this, say, for a period of time.
Okay, so we're shipping the broken one south?
Correct.
And we're shipping a surplus one up?
Already did replace it.
It's already here.
Already did that. We didn't have a choice there. When we had the outage, we didn't know if we were gonna lose any other breakers, so we made that emergency decision.
And that's okay. I'm just trying to figure out, now, what's the new one cost?
To get a brand-new one?
Yeah.
They don't exist.
So what happens if it all goes gunning? What are you gonna do?
Then we'll have to go get, well, there's two types of repairs. One's called retrofit, one's called retrofit fill. So one is the cell that it goes into. If we burn up the cell, then we have to get a remanufactured cell. If we burn up the breaker, then we get a remanufactured breaker.
What if we put in a new building and it needs this whole mess?
Well, then that's a whole different, that's another project, right? For instance, like, for instance, like Beethe Substation, you remember when we did Beethe?
Yeah.
So we went down to a company in California, and that company, I'm trying to remember the name, was, in any event, we had a whole array built for us there with modern-day equipment, right? So those breakers are all brand-new, and we had two additional spare. So we can get that kind of stuff here, it's just gonna be a much larger magnitude of cost than these surplus breakers. I don't know, that answer your question?
Well, sort of. I was trying to compare continuing to fix old stuff versus getting it replaced to where we don't have to repair the old stuff. But I'm not getting the...
Well, we have a lot of it. That's the whole thing. There's lots of it. So for a new switchgear array, I throw out a million dollars. Ballpark figure.
Well, that gives me an idea that we're spending 28,000 for a million bucks.
Yes.
Okay.
So the project down at Beaver Falls, million dollars.
Okay.
Any other questions for Andy? Thank you very much, Andy.
Thank you.
All right, anything else on the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, call the roll, please.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yeah.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isum?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Okay, that passes four to nothing. I apologize, I meant to put the unfinished business, the 6B1 on the consent agenda. So we'll need a motion, ordinance 151802, amending Chapter 1112 Telecommunications Services and Rates, second reading. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move that the council approve its second reading ordinance number 151802, amending Chapter 11.12 Telecommunications Services and Rates of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, providing for a public hearing and establishing effective date.
Second.
Moving second. You ready to have anything on it? Call the roll.
Isum?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yeah.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
And Kifer?
Yes.
All right, that passes, I guess, six to nothing. Okay, I'm counting wrong. And that brings us down to new business 7A1, 2015 to 2017 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of Ketchikan and the Ketchikan Professional Fire Fighters Association, Local 27621. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move that we postpone this to another date, so I get it stuck, and I'll tell you why.
I'll second it.
Reason being is that we have two brand-new members standing here. There would only be four of us, and half of us, and half of them, if we go into a meeting to talk about it or not here. So I think we need more of a full council sitting here to deal with this issue.
Anybody else? Judy?
I agree with that, Your Honor.
Bob, Dave, did you hear that?
Yes, we did.
We're gonna wait until you guys get back next meeting.
It probably makes more sense, yeah.
All right. Dick, did you make a motion to defer?
Yes.
Yes.
Did we get a second?
I second it.
Okay.
For the next meeting?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yeah.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isum?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to nothing. It'll be brought up at our first meeting in November. And that brings us down to 782 Agreement for the City-funded Medical Center Furniture Fixtures and Equipment Acquisition Phase 1 of Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Project. We have a motion, please.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move that the city council approve the agreement between the City of Ketchikan and Peace Health for the acquisition of the city-funded Medical Center Furniture Fixtures and Equipment, authorize funding from the Ketchikan Medical Center Expansion Capital Account, and direct the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Judy, do you want to say anything?
No.
Carl, do you want to explain? This is the stuff that will stay with the building? This isn't just the...
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. This is equipment that was originally intended to be procured by the city, separate and distinct from the $8 million that Peace Health is contributing to the project. Essentially, what we've done by bringing Peace Health into the process and having them acquire the equipment on our behalf, we're saving a substantial sum of money.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yeah.
Isum?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Yeah, that passes six to nothing, brings us down to 7B2 Budget Transfer Federal Universal Service Charges. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Judy.
I move that the city council authorize the general manager to transfer $85,000 from appropriated reserves of the KPU Enterprise Fund to the Telecommunication Division 2015 Building and Operating Permits Account, account number 630-01, for the purpose of funding additional and unanticipated federal universal service charges.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, Judy, anything?
No.
Carl, you want to explain what's going on?
Your Honor?
Yeah, just a second, Bob. I was gonna call you next.
Sounds good.
Mr. Mayor, these were unanticipated charges that were assessed against KPU by the federal government. We had not originally budgeted them, and we're asking for $85,000 to be transferred from appropriated reserves. These charges will eventually be passed on to our customers in the billing process, and that transfer will make appropriated reserves whole. It's really a net-neutral transaction. If you want more information, Ed, if you want to come up.
Yeah, come up. Bob has some questions, so...
Good evening, Ed, Division Manager, KPU Telecommunications.
Bob?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Ed, this is $85,000. That looks like it's about 32% of the original budget, which was about $180,000 from what I can tell on this. What is our yearly cost for these universal service charges?
Well, it will now be roughly $220,000 per year. To put it in context, KPU Telecom participates in a national pooling arrangement, the net of which is about $4 million plus to us per year. That is, we receive $4 million from off-island to support our ongoing cost of operations and to ensure we're gonna return our investment in the network. That arrangement is subject to a very complex set of formulas that's subject to refinement and adjustment by the federal government at their whim. This year, they initially decided to put KPU in a new rate band, which would have cost us $300,000. We ultimately, through a series of meetings and negotiations, were able to convince them to enter into an arrangement to put us in a different rate band. The net of that activity increased our costs by $85,000. But the overall net of our ongoing separations process still keeps us in that $4 million positive range. Having said all that, we do have to pass through universal service fee charges to our customers. It's not something we want to absorb.
Anything else, Bob?
Oh, Ed, this $85,000 transfer will take us through the end of the year, or is it just catching up since this is done quarterly to the third quarter?
No, this'll keep us whole for the year.
That's good. And then, in that account also, it looks like that we have some other things, like operating permits and right-of-way stuff and like that. And I just wondered in the 216 budget if we could get those broken out a little bit more, so we can kinda see how those things all work. It's, right now, I think it's about $230,000. When you put 85, it's gonna be a $300,000 account that a little more detail would be nice on.
Sure, not a problem.
Dick?
Yeah, Ed, tell me, what's the basis for getting $4 million? What do we do that earns us $4 million?
Sure. So fundamentally, many, many years ago, the federal government, or we as a nation, made a decision that the overall economic growth and health of the entire United States is fundamentally dependent upon telecommunications services being available to everyone in the nation at a reasonable, affordable rate. Otherwise, the theory went, people in rural communities would never have reasonably-priced telephones, or never have reasonably-priced long-distance service. And we'd all fall off the edge of the network, and the overall economy would suffer. So a formula was put in place that essentially looks at, say, a community like Ketchikan, we have a standalone telephone company. And there's a calculation that takes place based upon how much capital we've invested in the network, and how much it costs us to maintain the ongoing operations of the network. All those numbers go into a formula, and in the case of small rural companies, it's typically a net. That is, we might collect and pass through $100,000 a year in universal service fees or taxes that are collected from our customers. But to ensure we have an ongoing network operation that we can afford, we might receive $4 million back to pay us back for an earning on our investment, and to subsidize our ongoing cost of operation. By contrast, in a larger city like Cincinnati, or New York, or Chicago, they might collect ten, the telephone company, might collect hundreds of millions of dollars of universal service fees that have appeared on customer bills. Those telecommunications companies don't get any subsidy. The theory being, they're large enough, they collect enough, they make enough money, they can afford to operate. So that fabric overlays the entire United States to, this fabric of universal support subsidy payments to small rural telephone companies, overlays the entire United States. That's how it is that somebody in Ketchikan or in Goon can afford to have a telephone, in this case, or a cellphone, because cell companies are also part of this pooling arrangement. In Ketchikan, the average cellphone customer, or I should say, average cellphone company receives a subsidy of $35 per month. That's what keeps cellphone service available in a community like Ketchikan and Goon. So that's the, I hope that...
Well, it sorta does. Does GCI get this kickback?
I hesitate to call it a kickback, but yes.
Subsidy.
Subsidy's a nice...
My money coming back.
I would call it a fantastic system. But GCI and AT&amp;T, as early entrance into the construction of wireless systems in Alaska, are able to collect the, we'll call it subsidy payment for operating the cell system. Those payments are frozen and will go down over time. KPU, when it enters into the retail wireless business, well, will not. We were too late. That program is stopped. On the wireline side, or wired telephone service, GCI owns some ILEC properties and telephone companies in Alaska. They definitely receive subsidies for operating those. Those are open in western Alaska, very, very rural areas. That's what, essentially, the notion is, it keeps us all whole, ties us together as a, as a nation. Absent that, I don't think anyone in this room, very few people in this room, could afford telephone service, and ultimately, internet service, et cetera.
Talking about internet, I think it changed this. I could've sworn I read some stories about looking at the Universal Fund for internet stuff.
Yeah, the whole, the entire Universal Service Fund concept and structure was originally based on subsidizing POTS lines, or plain-old dial tone lines. I don't know about you, but I only have one because I kinda have to have one. I use a cellphone. Ironically, today, the system is still based on POTS lines. There is finally a great deal of movement at the FCC, given pressure from Congress and our industry, to change that to be a broadband-specific program.
Would that be good for us or bad, was my only question?
It'd be good for us. Very, very, very good for us. And it's a very rational, very logical thing to do. All of our future investments are really about broadband, they're not about dial tone.
I'll encourage.
Okay, that's a good one.
Any other questions?
So... Your Honor?
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, under the manager report down on 9B1, it talks a little bit about the Docket rulings under the KPU Telecommunications section. And it states that the universal service contribution factor of 17.1 was decreased to 16.7, four tenths of a percent. I just wondering what that meant to us.
What the what was?
It's one of Dan's entries in the manager report.
No, I know what he's referring to, but I didn't understand, I didn't hear the...
He wants the difference with the change, the percentage.
Frankly, I don't know what that nets out to, Councilman Seivertson. This, the Universal Service Fund activity is constantly changing, shifting, and it's, it's a, at a certain level of observation, it's whack-a-mole. Something goes up, something goes down. But every once in a while, one like this pops up where something came up, but nothing went down. So that's the essence of it.
Any other questions, Bob?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Dick, did you have something?
Yeah, so if they're gonna tag this universal fee onto the internet, if that's the right way to put it, is it gonna go the same way as my landline does? I pay $10 a month for my landline, and I pay another 20 for fees? And I'm gonna get rid of my landline to tech with you guys?
I've been, I've been doing this stuff longer than some of our council members have been alive. And I've never seen the totality of those fees go down. They have been, sort of like airline fees attached to your airline bill, or your rental car bill. There's always something. What we will strive to do in the management of KPU's business is keep things net-net. So as we do our advocacy relative to the broadband support mechanisms kicking in and the POTS... So as we do our advocacy relative to the broadband support, uh, mechanisms kicking in and the POTS support mechanisms going away, is we want to ensure our net receipts of USF funds stay the same. They don't go down. We know they won't go up. We want to make sure they don't go down. The impact on your, the end customer bill, uh, will commit to you that I will do everything I can do to ensure your bill doesn't go down, because I need that same flow of revenue. That shouldn't be cute, but what I'm saying, getting at is, I think this would be true of most companies. Once you're no longer required to have a POTS line, because I think you find when you're shopping for internet and telephone service, dang it, I have to have a POTS line to, to also get the TV and internet. We do that because if we don't sell you a POTS line, we don't get the subsidy revenue, 'cause the subsidies are tied, tied to the Docket line. Once that requirement goes away, I don't know about you, but I'll probably drop my POTS line. We'll have to ensure that our revenues and expenses don't sti- continue to match up. So I think generally, you'll probably see the, the cost of internet service go up to make up for that loss over time of the revenue from the POTS lines. That's just generally how I think it shake out. I don't see any of this ultimately resulting in rates going down.
Never does.
No, it never does, right. Our expenses keep going, rising. Most businesses, that's the battle, right? Your expenses are always going up. I'm just trying to keep up.
We'll deal, we'll deal with it in budget.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Gage?
Yes.
Isim?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yep.
Seivertson?
Yeah.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to vouchers. Daily News, two thousand four hundred forty-eight dollars and ten cents. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move for approval of the vouchers, the Ketchikan Daily News, in the amount of two thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars and ten cents. I'll second.
Moved in second. Call the roll.
Seivertson?
Yeah.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isim?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Hey, that brings us to manager's report, Carl.
Nothing, Dave.
Anybody have any questions on the manager's report?
Oh, um, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Um, one of the things that is under the four-year information is the marijuana regulations. And I had put a call in to Mitch, uh, in regards to the timetable. Uh, the Borough is moving forward right now with some of the, uh, um, ordinances to deal with permits, and I think the city should be looking at mirroring those and seeing what the timetable's gonna work out. We want to be able to have the ability to do that, um, when the, uh, the perk permits can be applied for in February. So, um, I'd like to put that on someplace, or at least, uh, have Mitch look at it and bring it back to us. I know our process of bringing an ordinance forward is a little bit, uh, has a longer life lead time than does the, uh, the Borough. So I think it's important for us to be looking at that, and plus, if there were, um, any further restrictions, uh, within the city that we may want to look at, uh, in regards to, uh, helping us with enforcement, we should look at those also.
So is, um, this coming out of your committee, Bob, or is this separate with the Borough?
No, it, it's coming out of our committee, but I think the Borough is gonna be moving forward with the zoning ordinances in regards to, uh, they do the, all the overlay zone, we don't do the zone process. But there's also ordinances and, and, uh, regards to the permitting that, um, we've been working on, and I, I, I spoke to Mitch's office, he was out on vacation, uh, in regards to maybe getting ahold of those and seeing what it's gonna take for us to move those forward, and if they fit our needs. Uh, since we do have enforcement, I think that there's a few things that we should be looking at, too, so, um.
Carl, do you got that?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
We're on it, Bob.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a question for Bob. Uh, Bob, is the city council gonna get to look at the Borough stuff before they pass it?
Well, you know, um, I think the zoning things will, we have, uh, uh, an opportunity to comment on that. I think it would be worthwhile if we had a presentation from the Borough. Uh, they've done a great job of tracking what the state's doing and, and working it into their zoning regulations, and, and looking at some of the other rules that they come forward on the different sets. So, um, I think it would be worthwhile if we were to, um, get a presentation.
We can check with Mr. French and see if he can do something for us.
Uh, that would be great.
Anything else on manager's report? Moves this down to city clerk's file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City attorney's file?
Not here.
Not here. Future agenda items, anybody? Mayor, council comments? Dick?
None.
Okay. Judy?
None.
Bailey?
None.
Chili?
It's good to see so many people here.
Bob?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Dave?
Well, over that, obviously, with Bob and me not there, it speeds up the meetings. It's probably a good thing.
All right, um, the only thing I have is, um, we're gonna talk about these executive sessions here in a second. Um, also, we had a, um, executive lobbying, whatever you call it, meeting today, and, um, the Borough has a pile of resolutions that they're interested in sending north. Um, I told them, would, I'd bring it back to the council to look at. I'll make sure , uh, management gets copies out to everybody, so we can see what their resolutions that they're encouraging to go forward. And maybe we can pick out some stuff out of it that, um, it also involves the city and, um, something, you know, some of it's all Borough-related, but, um, we'll see what we like or not like, and we can, um, then, uh, we'll have a meeting again and go over that. I think Dick's and me are on the committee, so. That's all I had. That brings us down to executive sessions.
Yeah, Lou, if I, if I could-
You betcha, Dick.
To the, uh, not the executive session yet, but to the, uh, lobbying committee.
Oh.
There was a bunch of policy stuff that the Borough had done, and I think that if we look at it, and, and I know Carl understood what we were saying, we may want to pick some of those out, and pick some others out, and emphasize them from our viewpoint, and not necessarily from the Borough, because that was a really a long laundry list that they had of policy stuff. And so I think that was the intent. If we get them back, then we can review them and add, either pick out things we want to emphasize or add something to them for emphasis.
Also, if management could also, if they have anything in there they want-
Yeah, that's exactly right.
If anything, or something, Dave. All right, that brings us down to executive sessions. We seem to have a, um, issue with those. Dick?
Uh, yes, I would propose, and I don't really need to make a motion, that we, again, postpone the executive sessions. We've got two new members here and two old members, and that's all it's gonna be sitting in there dealing with this, and, and it's not fair to the two new ones unless they'd like to. And it's probably not fair-
Old?
Yeah, we're old. It's just a matter of how old you want to be. You're only two years old, I'm four.
Clerk, do we, do we have to defer these, or we can just?
No, you can just not consider them. That's fine.
Okay. Carl, um, I agree with Dick. I imagine Judy does, too, ladies. On our first meeting in, um, November, you already told me we have several.
We have three executive sessions already scheduled.
Okay, so we'll have three more. So can we make, um, any way we can make the agenda light, so we can just work on executive sessions?
I assume you want me to bring back the policy issues that you just talked about regarding the Borough.
Um, why don't we just get them out to the council? We can talk about that.
Yeah. Yeah, we can wait on those.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that's a rush. So that's all I, if you can.
So keep the agenda light.
And then we'll have all six executive sessions, and we'll go at it. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us down to, wow. You got plenty. I guess I could make a speech or something.
Why not?
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Thanks, Dave.
Is that the fastest meeting?
Boy, that's two quick meetings with you guys.